May our life together be strengthened by what is decided this day. Give us the courage to do what is right and just, for this we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Father. So we are now going to do the presentation of the flags by the Boy Scouts and Cub Scouts, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. The people who are going to do the Star Spangled Banner today, it doesn't appear that they are here, so I guess we'll sing it together. All right? Who wants to start? Say.
Play ball.
Good job, everyone. All right. So now, before we get started, I'd like to do a moment of silence for all the town officials, town employees, and town honorees that we've lost since the last time we met. Beth Cohen, Rent Control Board. Richard Cudmore, Call Firefighter. Sumner Latt, School Maintenance. John Richardson, Call Firefighter, Captain. Edna A. Rowe, School Baker. Janice M. Wells, School Guidance Office Secretary. Thank you. The time is now 5:58. I'm going to call the meeting to order. My name is Jason Ross. I'll be your moderator tonight for tonight's town meeting. I just want to reiterate to everyone who's been here before, please, if a question has already been asked, please don't ask it again, but feel free, if you have questions related to the article, don't be afraid to ask them. We do want to be respectful of everyone, so please, don't argue with each other. Address all questions to me. If we follow those steps, we can all be out of here by 8 o'clock and see the Bruins tonight. So with that being said, we're going to move on to the fir— Oh, we're going to start with the Town Clerk reading the warrant.
To either of the Constables of West Bridgewater in the County of Plymouth, greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of West Bridgewater, qualified to vote in elections and town affairs, to meet at the West Bridgewater Middle Senior High School in said town on May 6, 2024, at 6:00 PM, and then there to act on the following articles to wit. Pursuant to within the warrant, I have, on behalf of the Constables of West Bridgewater, this day notified and warned inhabitants of the town of West Bridgewater, qualified to vote in elections and town affairs, to meet in the time, place, within mention, by posting fifteen attest copies of within warrant at various locations throughout Precinct 1 and Precinct 2, seven days at least before the aforesaid annual town meeting. Angie Yenatelli, Justice of Peace, Town of West Bridgewater.
Thank you. So we're going to get started. There are two books in here I want to also introduce to you guys. This is the Annual Report and Recommendations of the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee, and then this right here is the Annual Town Report. So when we mention either of those, that's what these are. So Articles 1 and 2 are consent articles. Selectman Ryan.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. Move that the town consider and approve Articles 1 and 2 as printed on the warrant as a single consent article.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee voted unanimously, just recommend these.
Thank you. Board of Selectmen.
Board of Selectmen recommends unanimously.
Thank you. Would you like to speak to the motion?
No.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes heavy unanimously. Article 3, that is, Selectman Perez.
Article 3, move that the town vote to determine the salaries of the following elected town officers for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024. Moderator, 338. Board of Selectmen, 10375. Town Clerk, 81268. Board of Health, 5133. Board of Assessors, 10,539. Water Commissioner, 7,295. The following officers to serve without pay: Library Trustees, Planning Board, School Committee, Tree Warden.
Thank you. Is there a second? Finance Committee.
Recommended unanimously.
Thank you. Board of Selectmen.
Recommended unanimously.
Thank you. Would you like to speak to the motion? No? Okay. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes heavy unanimously. Okay. Article 4, this is the annual town budget. Janice Fox.
Move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $44,610,754 for the maintenance and support of the several departments of the town and other usual or necessary town charges as herein specified and requested by the Finance Committee for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024, for the purposes herein described and further, that the sum of $40,511,119 be raised and appropriated, and the sum of $4,099,635 to be transferred as follows. From estimated water revenues, $2,279, from emergency medical services receipts, $400,000. From free cash to offset debt exclusion borrowing costs for the new middle high school, $350,000. From free cash, $903,356, totaling $4,099,635.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee voted unanimously.
Thank you. Board of Selectmen.
Board of Selectmen voted unanimously.
Thank you. So what I'm going to do is, this is our budget, our—the recommendations like we talked about. So I'm going to go through every single budget in here. If you have any questions, I want you to yell out "Hold." But before we begin, there's going to be a brief presentation by the town administrator, who's going to kind of explain this budget, and then afterwards, I'm going to read through all of the different budgets, and we can call out our questions or holds at that point.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So my name is David Gagney. I'm the town administrator, and I'll be very quick to give you a high-level summary of your budget and your spending articles. I was requested by the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen to do this, so that everybody can see it from a high-level view. First, today is May 6, so we are not just presenting a budget today that has not had a lot of thought and a lot of knowledge put behind it. Back in December of 2023, the Board of Selectmen met, and they reviewed all budgets and sent out their request to budget heads, department heads, elected boards, and everybody else that has a budget, and requested them to turn it in by the end of January. Through February and April, every single department head, elected committee, any school committee, all the boards and committees, all met with the Board of Selectmen, myself, and the Finance Committee, and they reviewed their budget, and we extensively went through it. My job then in April is to put together a balanced budget, turn in revenues and receipts to the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee. And in April, the Board of Selectmen then voted on a budget, passed it, and passed it along to the Finance Committee. It is the Finance Committee's budget that you see before you this evening with their recommendation. So what is the budget? The budget for fiscal year 2025, which starts on July 1, will be about $44,600,000, or about a 2.5% increase year over year, or 5.79% increase. Included in that budget, as the chairperson of the Finance Committee said, is that we will transfer $350,000 from free cash to offset it, which lowers your tax bill. We have done that 10 years in a row, and so collectively, you have saved $3.5 million from your overall tax levy by making that change. In addition, this year, the Finance Committee also recommended that we transfer $900,000 in free cash, which further reduces your tax bill as well. Out of that $44 million, surprisingly, five budgets make up the majority of it, or 78%. It's on page 34. We put it in the book every single year, and that way you see that information. In addition to that, five budgets actually make up 84% of the year-over-year increase. Again, that's what you'll be voting on shortly. That is Article 4. When you have done Article 4, you will then turn yourself to spending articles. That'll be Articles 7 through 10, which are CPC, or Community Preservation Articles. They'll bring in about $300,000 this year. They'll be requesting to spend about $225,000. The next spending articles that you will see are all free cash articles. Again, as an edification, free cash is made up basically of three sources. One is new growth, revenue that we didn't anticipate the previous year, think if you put a deck on your house or a business moves into town. The second is additional receipts that we didn't anticipate. Again, when you buy a new car, excise tax bill comes in. And the last is that department heads do not always spend their entire money. So we generate about $3.7 million year over year. You already saw that $1.2 million of it is being spent to offset the budget, again, to reduce the tax bill, and about $2 million will be spent on these capital budget items. After we turn our attention from the town-side articles, we'll then look at our water articles. They will have four. The first three of them will be paid for by the water surplus, and they generate water surplus the way the town generates, cash surplus. So it's money that was not spent, or additional revenue that came in. They'll spend about $38,000, they'll roll the rest over, and there'll be one borrowing article. One thing to keep in mind is that besides your tax dollars, the other way that we generate our budget is through state aid. There are three large buckets of state aid that come in every single year, and you'll see on the graph, there's Chapter 70, better known as educational funds, Chapter 90, which is transportation funds, think Mass DOT, and the third one is local aid. And what's interesting from this graph is that over 10 years, is that our local aid and our Chapter 90 funds have actually stayed the same, or in some instances, went down. That is not adjusted for inflation. That is real dollars. But you'll also see, especially after the 2019 passage of the Student Opportunities Act, is that school aid really went up. And that's good, because we have an excellent school department that we want to continue to fund. But you'll also see from that is that outside of Chapter 70 funds, we are really not getting the assistance from the state that we really need, and that trend continues. So I think the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee have shown a lot of leadership on this issue over the last handful of years. We have continued to put money into a rainy day fund, better known as a stabilization account, and with passage of Article 14, which is, we're going to request $500,000 from surplus to put in that, we'll have put about $3.4 million into that account, which represents about 7.5% of your total operating budget. So that helps us if state aid continues to go down, though we have a resource. The other is, is that because we have not seen any increase in construction aid whatsoever, because costs go up and aid is not going up, we're actually going backwards. So again, the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee have continued to support placing money into a sidewalk account, so we could keep on doing construction in town. You see that we have new sidewalks on Howard Street, River Street, and we'll continue going down River Street and using those funds. So I wanted to say thank you. That is just a quick overview of the budget, and I hope we all have a really good town meeting.
Mr. Moderator, I had a question on that part of the presentation.
Which specific part? Because I'm going to go through the different departments.
It was on the $350,000. I wanted to kind of understand how the high school debt exclusion, or whatever we're doing, how that has saved us money, and how much it's saving us money on the loan that we took out to build the high school 10 or 12, 15 years ago.
So when the high school passed in 2012, 2013—I was hired in 2013—the Board of Selectmen tasked me with finding a way to be able to make sure that we could offset that payment as much as we could. So when you get to budget, I think it's $7,510, $7,510, that is your debt budget. You will see in there, it's about $2.6 million is what we pay for the school every single year. So we can't offset that individual budget. You have to offset the budget as a whole. So the Board of Selectmen at that point said, what can we do? We use $350,000 to reduce the overall budget, and what we've always communicated is that we did that to try to do our best to offset the debt payment specifically for the school.
Does it—is it benefitous because we're paying our interest off early?
No. What you're doing is, is that you're not being fully taxed on it.
Okay. The other thing I wanted to say was, this was an excellent presentation.
Thank you.
I've been coming to town meeting for over 30 years, and I haven't seen one like this before, and I really liked it. Because I was going to ask about, where did all the free cash come from this year? We seem to have about $2.5 million in free cash that we're moving around all over. What happened in town that we're generating so much extra revenue, so to speak?
Yeah. We did. We generated a lot of free cash this past year, and really, two sources of the bulk of it. One is new growth. Unfortunately, you can look around you, and you're going to see that we have a lot of construction. So whenever you have that, not only does that generate additional taxes, it generates additional permitting fees, so that brings in more revenue. The other item, and none of us like rising interest rates. It all costs us more money. However, if you have a lot of money in the bank, you actually generate more investment income. So we historically would sometimes generate $10,000 to $20,000 a year on investment income, just money sitting there. And this year, we generate almost $800,000 just from that. So we don't ever want to balance our budget on those, because next year, when the Fed price starts lowering rates, we'll see that come down. But that's the reason we generated so much this year.
Thank you. So now I'm going to go over the different departments, and like I said, if you have any questions, want clarification, wanted to speak to that specific department, yell out "Hold" when I say "Hold." So for example, the first one I'm going to call out is moderator, and I'm going to say the amount of money that's recommended, which is $788. I'm going to one, two. If no one yells "Hold," we move on to the next one, and so forth. And then when I get through it, we'll go back to whichever ones we call "Hold" on. Okay. So with that being said, we're going to start with moderator. That is $1,000—sorry, $788. Okay. Board of Selectmen, that is $406,803. Town Planner, $285,542. Finance Committee, $3,100. Reserve Fund, $67,000. FinCom Reserve—oh wait, sorry, I read that again. My bad. Accountant, $123,176. Assessors, $277,613. Treasurer Collector, $356,826. Town Council, $87,000. Information Systems, that is $148,851. Cable TV Committee, $1,100. Town Clerk, $157,299. Elections Registration, $55,716. Conservation, $90,860. Open Space Committee, $2,950. Agricultural Commission, $600. Planning Board, $28,299. Board of Appeals, $6,414. Rent Control Board, $4,776. ADA Compliance Committee, $4,000. Insurances, $310,575. Town Hall, $75,875. Municipal Building Needs Committee, $1,525. Waste Water Treatment Facilities, $15,606. Police Department, $3487,629. Fire Department, $2,933,385. Building Inspector, $153,609. Inspector of Gas and Plumbing, $25,028. Sealer of Weights and Measures, $6,478. Inspector of Wires, $25,028. Canine Control, $8,250. Southeastern Regional VOTEC, that is $1,8,308. Public Works, $1,489,984. Public Works Snow Removal, $91,300. Public Works Street Lighting, that is $95,700. Waste Disposal Sanitation, $369,053. Tree Warden, $400. Board of Health, $124,279. A New Day Women's Place Crisis Center, that is $2,750. Brockton Area Arc, $250. Old Colony Hospice Care, $2,000. Council on Aging, $400,256. Library, $582,390. Plymouth County Extension Services, $200. Historic Commissions, $1,775. Veterans and Memorial Day, $2,600. Retirement of Debts, $2,050,996. Interest on Long-Term—yeah, interest on long-term debts, $769,825. Okay, and that is—I'm just double-checking here. Interest on Short-Term Debts, $75,000. Water, that is $2,446,279, for a grand total of $44,610,754. All right, that is your annual town budget. We do have a couple "holds," so we'll start from the beginning and work our way back. So the first hold was with insurances.
Neil Conley, 3761, let's read. I sort of got it screwed up when you—insurances, when you said the other eight or nine million for the benefit for the town, because last year was an article, and we approved it as an article, now it's put in the budget. But the question is, is that a yearly cost to the town? Because if I—if I can go from this one just to that one, Mr. Moderator.
To the benefits?
Yeah, just to see what it is. If not, I'll just wait, just ask the question. All right, just on the insurances, what's the insurances for, for $310,000? I thought it'd be under the other one.
That's all of your—all of your property insurances and your fleet insurances for all the buildings. So your buildings right now are valued at, give or take, about $120 million all told, and all your vehicles in town, and that's what our bill is to pay that bill.
And that's all it is for the vehicles? And one other thing, on the Public Works, I wanted to have a hold on that. I thought it was the building. So on that also.
Public Works. Okay. So hearing none for insurances, we're going to move on to the Southeast Regional VOTEC.
Neil Conley, 3761, just two quick questions. It's gone up 200, almost a quarter million dollars. Who's a school committee person that sits on that board now? Do we have somebody from West Bridgewater?
Yeah. Right now, the person that was on there has resigned, so that position is vacant.
So it's vacant? So is it an open seat?
It is.
So do we—just have an idea, how come it's gone up a quarter of a million dollars? Because I remember years ago, the superintendent used to come to the meetings now.
Yes, there's more—more kids were accepted.
More kids? That's good. It's a great school to go to. That's a damn—it's—that's a good school to go to.
Okay. Anything else on Regional VOTEC? If not, we're going to go to Public Works.
I have a few questions on that, on the budget. We don't have a superintendent for that department, do we? Who wants to answer it?
No, not at the moment.
Well, my question—here's my problem. We had a guy that retired, Chris Yenatelli. You kept him on, you're paying him $75 an hour, is that correct?
Sounds—
All right, say $75. And how many hours does he work since he retired? Is it in this budget here? What are you—we're paying him? And where—if we’re—we're getting the money from? Where we're paying him from? Then I want to ask a legal question.
So this budget that you're voting on takes effect on July 1. So it is—this budget is for the future. The question really is about paying Chris Yenatelli today, is our retired DPW director. It is in your current budget. So he was fully funded for the entire year of his salary. So I'm just going to make up numbers, because it's simple. If his salary was $100,000, we funded $100,000. He only worked half the year, that means we would have only spent out 50. And now if he works four hours a week, it's $75 an hour, we pay it out of that line. So that's one of the lines, that we will spend less money this year than originally budgeted, because he retired halfway through the year.
But the point is, he—he retired, so when you retire, you say, "See you later." For some reason, I can't figure out why, nobody in that department take over his spot.
That's out of the scope.
Well, the point is, you're paying him when you shouldn't be paying him. He's retired. I don't understand it. It's a slap in the face—
But that's out of scope.
—and it's a disgrace.
That's out of scope.
And you should be up there, defending your workers.
That's out of scope. And please direct all—all conversations to the moderator.
So how long is he going to stay on the payroll, collecting a free check?
Well, in all honesty, it's not a free check. He's working.
Well, it ain't.
He shows up—Neil, I'll answer the question.
And I'll ask the questions.
He—he shows up, he does his emails, he oversees the department where applicable, and quite frankly, the real role of that job is an administrator, and it is to make sure that the administration function of that job gets done, and that's what he's doing to the best that he can for a handful of hours, because the truth of the matter is, Mike, who is doing an excellent job as our assistant and running it, could never be able to be in the field, oversee the guys, handle all the emails, take the phone calls, open the mail. So Chris has been doing that for us, and doing that high-level administrative function. It was the best that we could do, in a very cost-effective way, to have an experienced, seasoned person— seasoned person, to be able to do the minimal amount of administrative work and keep the costs down. I thought it was a good fix. We're in the process of trying to hire a DPW Director. It is true that we don't have one yet, but we have a screening committee, we have looked at some applicants, we are going through the process, and as we all know, the labor market is pretty tight. So, like every other employer, we're going through the process. But Chris is working, and the last part to your question is, is that that expires, that contract with him expires on June 30th, because we have every anticipation to fill it by then.
Just respond to your comment you made, who did it before Chris retired? Did you hire somebody, did he hire somebody to do all that work? You just described what he was doing while he was working as the superintendent?
Before Chris retired, he did it full-time.
So, why can't we pick somebody from that department to do the same thing?
That's out of scope.
Huh, it's a disgrace.
All right, hearing nothing else on Public Works, we're going to move on to Benefits. Okay, hearing no other holds, we're going to vote on the budget. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Ayes have it. Article Five, Paula Bunker.
Move that the town accept the provisions of Section 4 of Chapter 73 of the Acts of 1986, and to further accept the provisions of Chapter 126 of the Acts of 1988, which will grant a percentage increase to real estate tax exemptions to persons who are otherwise qualified for such exemptions, and further to increase the real estate tax exemption to persons so qualified by 25% for fiscal year 2025.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Finance Committee?
Finance Committee voted unanimously to recommend.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously.
Would you like to speak to the motion?
No.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it unanimously. Article Six, Michael Hutchinson.
Move that the town vote to accept the authorization to spend $321,318 from the town's apportionment of Chapter 90 Local Transportation Aid Funding for the fiscal year 2025, in accordance with the figures released by the Massachusetts Department of Transportation, in accordance with Chapter 86 of the Acts of 2008.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Finance Committee?
Recommended unanimously.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously.
Thank you. Would you like to speak to the motion? Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it unanimously. Article Seven, that is, Cheryl Cambria.
Move that the town vote to appropriate from the Community Preservation Fund estimated revenues the following amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for committee administrative expenses, open space, historic resources, and community housing reserves, and other expenses in fiscal year 2025, with each item to be separate appropriations or reserve. The appropriations are, from FY 2025, estimated revenues for committee administrative expenses is $10,750. From FY 2025, estimated revenues for open space reserve is $0. From FY 2025, estimated revenues for historic resource reserves is $26,900. From FY 2025, estimated revenues for community housing reserves is $31,900. And from FY 2025, estimated revenues for undesignated funds is $0.
Thank you. Is there a second?
There's a second.
Finance Committee?
Recommended unanimously.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously.
Would you like to speak to the motion?
Sure. This is, the CPC requires that 10% of the money that comes into the town be put into specific buckets, and this is the appropriation of that money.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it unanimously. Article Eight, Cheryl Cambria.
Move that the town vote to appropriate $67,157 from FY 25 Community Preservation Fund estimated budget revenue to fund the debt service for the open space project of the new playground at Friendship Park.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Finance Committee?
Recommended unanimously.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously.
Would you like to speak to the motion?
This is the last payment for the debt service for the Friendship Park.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it unanimously. Article Nine, Cheryl Cambria.
Move that the town vote to appropriate $84,200 from the FY 2025 estimated budget revenue of the Community Preservation Fund Reserve, under the category of open space, to be spent under the direction of the Department of Public Works for the War Memorial Park Fish Passage Engineering and Permitting for Wildlife Habitat Preservation, or take any other action relative thereto.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Finance Committee?
Recommended unanimously.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously.
Would you like to speak to this motion?
This project is a continuation of the fish passage and its more permitting engineering work.
Okay. Anyone want to speak to the motion? Any discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it unanimously. Article Ten, Cheryl Cambria.
Move that the town vote to appropriate $5,000 for the FY 2025 Community Preservation Fund estimated budgeted revenue fund to fund the historical project, the Memorial and Veterans Day Veterans Legacy Committee's recognition project.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Finance Committee?
Recommended unanimously.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously.
Would you like to speak to this motion?
This project is also a continuation of a project that's been ongoing, and this group is identifying veterans in town, and they are ordering plaques to be put on their gravestones.
That's wonderful. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it unanimously. Article Eleven, Scott Goldar.
Move that the town vote to transfer from free cash a sum of $100,000 to fund other post-employment benefits, OPEB, liability trust fund established in accordance with Chapter 32b, Section 20 of the Massachusetts General Laws.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Finance Committee?
Recommended unanimously.
Thanks. Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously.
Would you like to speak to this motion?
Sure. This is the annual contribution to our OPEB liability program. The town set this up about 10 years ago. We've been putting in $100,000 just about every year, and eventually, it will hope to fund our employment benefits for retirees with the interest it generates.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it unanimously.
To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow a sum of the money the town, as the town matched for the web...
Sorry, you're reading the wrong one.
You've got to read move, read the move motion.
In the bold.
You don't have it there?
That's all I have. That the town vote to transfer from free cash a sum of $10,000 as the town's match for web task force in FY 2025.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Finance Committee?
Recommended unanimously.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously.
Would you like to speak to this motion?
Essentially, it's our match to contribute our participation in the web task force. We take the supplement drug buys, undercover buys, drug test kits and such, to, again, to be a contributing member of the task force.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it unanimously. Article Thirteen, Chief Nixon. It should be up there.
Move that the town accept the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 4, Section 4b, to revoke the town's acceptance of the Civil Service Law, Mass General Law, Chapter 31, with respect to the police force, the police chief, thereby removing all successors to the incumbents presently employed in the police force and as police chief from civil service.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Finance Committee?
Recommended unanimously.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously.
Would you like to speak to the motion?
I would, if I can face, I think it's easier. So essentially, we've been a civil service department for years. We have found through police reform, police accreditation, through our testing practices and policies, that it's not kept up with the needs that we have for this department. We've negotiated with the union, we've worked with the town administration, I stand before you to tell you, this is in the best interest of the police department and then the town. It's going to allow us to recruit differently, it's going to allow us to retain officers differently, because we're not begotten to a test, we're not begotten to really an antiquated, incumbersome process. So, we're here today, and we have, I'm with the Vice President of the Union, we have agreed to this, we all agree that this makes the department better, and when the town, when we worked it out with the town, we've already negotiated this. So, this is something that we collectively feel makes us better, to in turn recruit, retain, and serve you guys better.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, you have to come up to the microphone.
Elizabeth Estabrook, 145 Spring Street. I'm not familiar with this. Is this something that other towns are doing, and if so, where, and what's worked well for them?
Excellent question. So, we had a chiefs in service last November. The trend right now in civil service departments is about two-thirds of your civil service departments are seeking exit from civil service. We're fortunate in the fact that we came in originally through town meeting. That means our exit can be done, accomplished through a town meeting vote. Civil service, the towns that unfortunately have gone through legislation, civil service isn't leaving them, because there's a mass exodus of towns leaving civil service. To your point, where'd you go? Our contiguous towns, Eastern has left, East Bridgewater has left, you go further south, Lakeville, Free Town, a lot of those towns are leaving. Mansfield, if they haven't left, they are leaving. Foxborough has left. What you're seeing is, it gives you more autonomy to your hiring practice.
Jack Hughes, 640 North Elm. So, I wanted to ask the same type of question, which was, what towns nearby have done it? But in, also, in the recruiting process, does anything change? We still sending all the new officers to the academy, and I wish nothing like that changes? They still have to score on some kind of department test that we give? Or, how is our recruitment process going to be different than using just civil service?
So, to that point, what we're seeing is, we're getting, you're begotten to a civil service list. The hiring number practice for civil service, if we were to hire one officer, we have to take from the three officers or the three candidates that civil service offers. That's based on a test taken at some point in time. It goes a computer-based test, they've shown that, that the test has kind of not been an accurate way of measuring quality. What we would like to do is, we like to kind of broaden that. For instance, we're also having issues with West Bridgewater students, going to school, moving to an area town, they're ineligible, because they no longer live in this town. And what's happening is, the people that are moving to town aren't from West Bridgewater, so it's really an ebb and flow. But to the recruitment part of it, it gives us an ability to go to the high school, and I've already talked with Mr. Bartwell, and we can create cadet programs where we can kind of promote what we're doing, and we're not relying on civil service to give us a list of three names. We're a small department, we will be hiring probably over the next two, three years, but if we do it one person at a time, if you're fifth on that list, you're kind of screwed. You know what I mean? And you might be the best quality kid, you might have been, you know, great grades, good home, and we're talking a separation between '95 and '92. Personally, I don't think that's a fair way to judge the quality of a person based on the raw score that you got one particular day. So, that's how we're going to change the recruitment. We have Mass River Community College, strong community criminal justice program, Bridgewater State, we've got to get up and prove our worth, that's all.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it unanimously. Article Fourteen, Selectman Lee.
Move that the town vote to transfer from free cash a sum of $500,000 to be placed in the town's stabilization fund.
Is there a second?
Second.
Finance Committee?
Recommended unanimously.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously.
Would you like to speak to the motion? Okay. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it unanimously. Article Fifteen, Michael Hutchison.
Move that the town vote to transfer a sum of $2,167 from the Commonwealth Infrastructure Enhancement Trust Fund to be expended for the construction and engineering of sidewalks, roads, streets, intersections, or equivalent.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Finance Committee?
Recommended unanimously.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously.
Would you like to speak to this motion? No? Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it unanimously. Article Sixteen, Michael Hutchison.
Move that the town vote to transfer from free cash a sum of $300,000 to be expended by the Department of Public Works for the construction and engineering of sidewalks, roads, streets, intersections, or equivalent.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Finance Committee?
Recommended unanimously.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously.
Thank you. Would you like to speak to this motion? Okay.
Hey, how you doing? Benjamin Good, 21 Cross Street. Just got a question, I mean, last year, we laudicated a ton of funds for the sidewalks and everything, I think a lot of it went down to Scotland Street for the speedhumps. But, I mean, we still got bridges that are, I mean, look at the one on Forest Street, it's ready to collapse into the town river. I mean, we, I mean, is the sidewalks going to be for the schools? Is that where we're going with it? I mean, last year, we were talking about, all this stuff was going down, like through the schools and stuff, to get better walkways, but is any of this talk, I mean, like I said, I mean, $300,000, I mean, that's part of a bridge right there, I mean, we got one way into that street, one way out. You know, we got a problem, like I said, there's only one way in, God forbid something blocks that. But, I mean, just, I just want to know where all these sidewalks are going.
Hey, so when it comes to that bridge over on Forest Street, I joined the OCPC, and I'm part of the TIPS program. I raised my hand and volunteered to go and join that group. It is on the, so it is about a $5 million project to fix that bridge, it's in the planning stages right now, so it's not being forgotten about. We were under the assumption that it would be getting fixed or looked at this year, but it's not going to get fixed until 2029, the state is covering that.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Is the sidewalk still going to be planned on?
Yeah, please come to the microphone.
Phase one went from Central Square to the town park. Phase two is going to begin shortly from the town dam by the park to Howard Street. The engineering has begun from Howard Street to South Elm Street.
I have a question. Roughly, how many feet do we get for $300,000? Not a lot, I know that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it unanimously. Article Seventeen, Anna Iantelli. And please silence your cellphones.
Move that the town vote to transfer from free cash a sum of $48,500 to be expended by the town clerk... by the town clerk to purchase a digital sign.
Thank you. There's a second? Okay. Finance Committee?
Recommended unanimously.
Thank you. Board of Selectmen? Would you like to speak to the motion?
Sure. We're looking to get a sign put out in front of the town hall to help with communication as far as town meetings, et cetera, get rid of our old metal signs that are very hard to read and blow over when the wind blows.
Huh, but those are so cool. All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Eyes heavy unanimously. Article 18, Michael Hutchison.
Move that the town vote to transfer from free cash a sum of $318,110 to be expended by the Department of Public Works for the purchase of a street sweeper and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to dispose of the street sweeper to be taken out of service in the best interest of the town.
Thank you. Is there a second? Finance Committee?
Recommended unanimously.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously.
Would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes. Our old sweeper is a 2001 Elgin sweeper, and it has a lot of issues, a lot of rust from the inside out. And it spends more time in the shop, and so it's time for a new sweeper.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Paul Connors, 29 Cross Street. So we have a lot of work going on down on Lincoln Street, Scotland Street, everything like that. I haven't seen the street sweeper out. I've been in town for 31 years. I can't remember the last time I saw that. Now, the work going on that's down on Scotland Street, Lincoln Street, everything like that, that's owned to be cleaned by the companies doing the work. $300,000 towards a sweet sweeper is a little bit ridiculous, if you ask me. Are we asking these companies to clean the streets after? Because I've seen none of these companies coming back and cleaning the streets, especially down, what is it down, is that Lincoln Street that's down next to Shell? I mean, you don't ever see any street sweepers going down that street. The amount of dirt that's being dragged down that street, onto 106 and further into our town is getting ridiculous. I mean, the fact that we have to spend $300,000 on a street sweeper is a little bit ridiculous. I mean, these companies should be cleaning up after themselves. We're paying them to be in our town, are we not? That's my thoughts.
Paul, I don't disagree with you in regards to companies maybe cleaning up the streets after themselves. But beyond that, I think some of the uses that Mike pointed out in front of the Capitol Budget Committee for the street sweeper is obviously sweeping up after the, you know, the sand and the salt that we get once we get to the springtime. And in addition, something I never thought about that Mike mentioned to me when we were talking about this as well, is when there's a large accident or something along those lines on the road, it is much easier and much more efficient to bring this piece of equipment out to clean up and clean up thoroughly and arguably better than a couple of people with brooms in the middle of the night trying to pick up glass and debris and things along those lines. Thank you. But I do agree with your first part.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Eyes have it by majority. Article 19, Michael Hutchison.
Move that the town vote, transfer from free cash a sum of $99,763 to be expended by the Department of Public Works to purchase an F-550 with a plow and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to dispose of the vehicle to be taken out of service in the best interest of the town.
Is there a second? Finance Committee?
Recommended unanimously.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously.
Would you like to speak to this motion?
Yeah, it's a 2006 F-450, and it has just a hair under 180,000 miles. And we had to put some work into it just to get it up and going for the winter months.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Eyes have it unanimously. Article 20, Michael Hutchison.
Move that the town vote to transfer from free cash a sum of $19,621 to be expended to the Department of Public Works to purchase an exhaust reel.
Thank you. Is there a second? Finance Committee?
Recommended unanimously.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously.
Would you like to speak to this? Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Eyes heavy unanimously. Article 21, Michael Hutchison.
Move that the town vote to transfer from free cash a sum of $250,000 to be expended to the Department of Public Works to repair the culvert at Grant Street.
Thank you. Is there a second? Finance Committee?
Recommended unanimously.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously.
Would you like to speak to this motion? Okay. Any discussion? Can you come to the microphone? Okay. Can you explain what it is?
Yeah, the culvert is a short stretch of a bridge that drainage runs through and under and is falling apart, breaking down.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Eyes have it unanimously. Article 22, Michael Hutchison.
Move that the town vote to transfer from the sum of free cash $11,175 to be expended on Department of Public Works to purchase a rotary lift.
Thank you. Is there a second? Finance Committee?
Recommended unanimously.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously.
Would you like to speak to this motion?
We're replacing the original lift that came over from the Police and Fire Department when the town mechanic worked in the Police and Fire Department years ago.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Eyes have it unanimously. Article 23, Chief Nixon.
Move that the town vote to transfer from free cash a sum of $64,192 to be expended by the Police Department to purchase a cruiser and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to dispose of the vehicle to be taken out of service in the best interest of the town.
Is there a second? Finance Committee?
Recommended unanimously.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously.
Would you like to speak to this?
We're just replacing a cruiser. We beat them up pretty good. Currently, this cruiser that we're replacing, we're forecasting it to be delivered pretty much a year from now. We just received the cruiser that we ordered last year at town meeting. The cruiser we're replacing right now has about 85,000 miles. We're anticipating by the time it comes offline, it'll be somewhere in the vicinity of 105,000. And the guys that are in the cruiser that we're replacing, they're taller because the seat's broken and it can't go up. So we're putting everyone in that.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Eyes have it unanimously. Article 24, Chief Thibault.
Move that the town vote to transfer from free cash a sum of $74,790 to be expended by the Fire Department to purchase personal protective equipment.
Thank you. Is there a second? Finance Committee?
Recommended unanimously.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously.
Would you like to speak to this motion?
This specific set of gear will purchase 18 new sets for the firefighter's gear that expired in December of 2023.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Eyes have it unanimously. Article 25, Chief Thibault.
Move that the town vote to transfer from free cash a sum of $67,398 to be expended by the Fire Department to purchase a new Jaws of Life and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to dispose of the Jaws of Life, the existing set, to be taken out of service in the best interest of the town.
Is there a second? Finance Committee?
Recommended unanimously.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously.
Would you like to speak to this motion?
The old set of Jaws of Life are about 20 years old and is mounted on one of our fire trucks. They are gas-powered hydraulic, so the hoses are starting to leak. That could be very dangerous to a first responder if that ever burst under pressure. The new Homatro set will be battery-operated and a lot lighter to use.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Eyes have it unanimously. Article 26, Marilyn Mather.
Move that the town vote to transfer from free cash a sum of $24,905 to be expended by the Council on Aging to purchase and install new flooring.
Thank you. Is there a second? Finance Committee?
Recommended unanimously.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously.
Would you like to speak to this motion?
Just as you can see in the photos, we do have some issues. We do have frost heaving, so that's part of that issue. But also, we've had several falls due to these floors and the shoes sticking. They're not slipping and falling there going forward. So one of those accidents is too many.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Eyes have it unanimously. Article 27, Robin Dragon Eddy.
Move that the town vote to transfer from free cash a sum of $72,165 to be expended by the School Committee to purchase Chromebooks.
Is there a second? Finance Committee?
Recommended unanimously.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously.
Would you like to speak to this motion?
Yes, so this sum will cover about 100 Chromebooks, and they are going to be replacing our elementary and special education teacher laptops by moving from a Windows-based laptop to a Chrome-based device. We're saving about $45,000. These devices do need to be replaced. They're about eight or nine years old. They're crashing. There's connectivity issues, and so it's time.
Any discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Eyes have it by majority. Article 28, Robin Dragon Eddy.
Move that the town vote to transfer from free cash a sum of $30,510 to be expended by the School Committee to purchase copiers for the Middle Senior High School.
Is there a second? Finance Committee?
Recommended unanimously.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously.
Would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, so this sum will cover five copiers. The copiers currently in the school were purchased with the building project, so they're nine years old, they regularly fail, they jam, there's poor quality quit printing, error messages, and whenever that happens, the service call has to be made. So it takes the machine out of commission, and then our teachers are competing for limited resources. So again, it's time to replace them.
Any discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Eyes have it by majority. Article 29, Wayne Parks.
Move that the town vote to transfer from water surplus a sum of $18,360 to be expended by the Water Commissioners to purchase a heavy equipment trailer.
Can you repeat that amount? Sorry.
Sure. $18,260.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Is there a second? Finance Committee?
Recommended unanimously.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously.
Would you like to speak to the motion?
Sure. So I don't, there it is. So that's the new trailer. It's a wheel under. Our current trailer was bought as a package with the excavator. It was minimum size, minimum weight. We have a 7,000-pound excavator. It's a 7,000-pound trailer. Anybody know what's wrong with that? It's overweight on the road. It's falling apart. It's a ramp design. You come up on the ramp. It's a fendered design, so when you come up on the ramp, the excavator's in the blade is up in the air. When it comes down, there goes the fenders. I can't get my finger between the wheel wells in it. The unit's about ready to crack in half in the back, so it's reached its end of life.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Eyes have it. Oh, unanimously. Article 30, Wayne Parks.
All right. Move that the town vote to transfer from water surplus a sum of $8,745 to be expended by the Water Commissioners to purchase a light-duty utility trailer.
Thank you. Is there a second? Finance Committee?
Recommended unanimously.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously.
Would you like to speak to this motion?
Certainly. So when I came here in '05, we had a box trailer. We used it for all our road construction. All of our equipment was in it all the time, so it was ready to go. But nobody wanted to drive it because it was an old truck with an AM radio. So Lenny Graff rebuilt the four-barrel carburetor, I don't know how many times, and in its final blow, it blew up in the garage and puffed flames, and that was the end of the box truck. After that, we started putting all of our equipment in the back of all our vans, wherever we could put it. And after you've been out in the road digging for 18 hours, now you've got to throw all that equipment up into big trucks or in the back of vans. So it's a cumbersome thing. This way, the trailer will be loaded all the time, ready to go. It will also move around our lawnmower. We don't have a trailer to get our lawnmower around. So we're at the will of the DPW, and they're very generous with their time with the trailer.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Eyes have it unanimously. Article 31, Wayne Parks.
All right. Move that the town vote to transfer from water surplus a sum of $10,999 to be expended by the Water Commissioners to purchase a lawnmower.
Thank you. Is there a second? Finance Committee?
Recommended unanimously.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously.
Would you like to speak to this motion?
Certainly. So our current lawnmower, it broke down towards the end of last summer. We put it in the shop to be repaired. The estimate came back at $4,000, just beginning. That's before they even take it apart, and they warned us that it was going to spiral upwards. It's a collision blade system, so when one blade snaps, the Shearpen goes, which it's supposed to if it hits something. Well, it swings around and catches the other one, so now you lost two hydraulic motors. And that's almost $1,000 in repair at a shot. The first three years we had the lawnmower, we wouldn't even drive it because every time we took it out, we hit something and kept breaking the motors. But now the cost to repair it is exceeding what it should be done. This is a commercial-grade mower. It's got four on the floor, dual overhead cam. No, it's a commercial-grade mower, so it'll do what we want to do.
All right. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Eyes heavy unanimously. Article 32, this is a borrowing article, which means it's going to require a two-thirds vote, okay? Wayne Parks.
All right. Move that the town vote to borrow a sum of $10,700,000 to be expended by the water commissioners for engineering, design, and permitting, bidding of a new ironies/manganese water treatment plant for five well sources in the Seer-Norman Ave area.
Is there a second? Finance committee?
Recommended unanimously.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously.
Would you like to speak to this motion?
Nah, we don't need to discuss this one. No. All right, so first, I need your confidence. I'm asking you to spend $10,700,000. We send out public notices, PNs, to us, and we scare the bejesus out of you, I'm sure. They're basically all advisories. They're not do-not-drink orders, they're not boil orders, but they're advisories that we've exceeded limits. So, the manganese we exceeded at Norman Ave. It's backed down, so we're within the specification or the MCL, the maximum containment level. But this plant will remove the iron and manganese that is in the wells. The wells, the levels are rising in the wells, and we get a lot of dirty water complaints out of it. So, that's what it'll bring. All of our sources will then be filtered for iron and manganese. What you don't see here is it does not say PFAS on it, does it? This, we began this pre-pandemic designing this because we could see the manganese levels rising, and eventually, DEP is going to set the maximum containment level. Right now, it's just a secondary. So, eventually, I'm probably going to be standing back here asking for some money for a PFAS. I need to tell you that because I want you to believe in me, because I'm going to ask you to spend $10.7 million. It's three times the size of the Manley plant. As you can see, it's a 1.8 million gallon-a-day plant.
Any discussion? Please come to the microphones.
Jack Hughes, 640 North Elm Street. I heard Wayne do a lot of discussion here. I didn't hear anything from the water commissioners. Where the water commissioners stand on this project, and have they been involved in this for the last three or four years?
Thank you for asking that, Jack. Art Cabral, chairman of the Water Commission. The commissioners have been involved in this, basically, Wayne, as these results come up, the water quality changes. Wayne's constantly keeping us informed. We've been talking with the engineering consultant that we use on an ongoing basis, on both the PFAS at Manley, on what we need to do here, potentially, what we might need to do for PFAS here when the limits get changed again, so that's all being included, not the construction, but at least the planning, so we don't build something in two years, need to take it down and start again. But it's, it's not something that just came out of the blue. It's been something that's being planned. And again, the big plus, and I heard somebody sitting behind me mention also something about an odor occasionally in the water. That's from another thing they found when they were doing the piloting. When this plant is done, that should take care of the color problems, the odor problems and such that come out from those wells. That's the intent of doing it, improve the safety and the aesthetic quality of the water.
Richard Olson, 15 Captain Carlson Way. Just a question, this will cover the whole town's water. Okay.
Question, we're going to borrow from the bank $10 million of a Dave Gagnes bank account.
So, we're on, we made the SRF funding list, so once again, until you get out and you receive the bids back, the state, SRF, State Revolving Fund, they won't tell us what we're actually going to get or what they're going to give us. So, it takes a long time. We haven't heard back on Manley. Manley just went to bid. We opened up the bids, they all came back very high. Nobody sharpened their pencils. All the construction trades, they're busy, so nobody sharpens pencils. So, we'll soon hope to find out what the SRF will give us for Manley Street.
My question will be then, you're looking for $10 million, but you just said from the state, they can kick in some money and they can drop it down, and if you don't, just say like they just give you $5 million. Then you go to the bank and borrow $5 million for a note for like how many years and?
Yep. So, that's why the state requires us, or requires you, the townspeople, to be behind the project and to fund it in full, because they don't want to, if they only give us $2, they want to know that you, they gave us $2 and that you spent the rest to make sure that the $2 was spent wisely. I'm hoping they give us $10,700,000, but?
One last question, if so, you don't have to come back to the town. Once we approve this, whatever the state does, you can just do on your own and go chase the money, or just go through Scott's office and he can?
That's how we hope it's going to be.
Jenny Williams, 47 Tiffany Circle. I'm just a regular citizen. I don't have all the books and notes that you guys have, and I probably missed half of what you're saying because I'm hard of hearing, but we gave you so much money last year, too.
Yes, you gave me $4 million last year.
And I just don't, I don't, I still have to go buy water. I can't drink my water. So, what is the plan for that, to get that going again? Is this, is this plant going to fix everything, and now I don't have to go buy water anymore?
Well, you shouldn't, if you ever read the things on bottled water, it's not as good as you think it is.
Well, we have no choice.
I don't know what the issue is there. If you call the office and tell us what your issues are, we'll be more than happy to come out and look.
But just the PFAS, everyone's got PFAS. I mean, I can't even get my water from Simpson Spring, but can I get it at Seer Street?
So, yes, you can get it at Seer. We still have that tap open, and Manley Street has been on, the PFAS removal system has been up and running since late February.
Is that Tiffany? Is that covered?
It's so, it's a blended system. We have six and a half million gallons of water in storage, and the town floats on that. So, when the pumps kick on, we fill the system, the tanks, but we also fill the system and supply to the system. It's hard to tell where the water goes. I have a general idea by when we get dirty water complaints because something's occurred, but yeah, we, the whole system feeds the entire town at any one time.
Okay. I have the million-dollar question for you.
Yep.
Is there going to be a water ban this summer?
So, we didn't have a water ban last year. We had water restrictions, but everybody read water ban, yes. So, we need to flatten the curve. DEP does not want you watering your lawns. I know the people with green lawns, love them green lawns, and they do look nice, but they don't want you doing that, and they can see the bell curve. We're coming in, and it, it, it takes a lot to get there, to produce the water, because sometimes, you know, you'll go out in the middle of the day, you've watched your lawn burn out for the entire summer, and now you throw the sprinkler in the middle of it, and you let it run all day, running down the street. That grass is never coming back. It takes a lot for the green lawns you see. It takes a lot of care and thing. It also takes a lot of things that you're putting on it, nutrients that get into our water supply. So, you have to be careful what you're doing, but there will be water restrictions. We're mandated by our water withdrawal port. We can't just turn on those pumps and pump water. We're not allowed. We're regulated heavily.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Eyes have it by majority.
I've never stood on this side before.
By a two-thirds majority. Article 33, Selectman Perez.
We will not be moving forward with this article at this time.
Thank you. Article 34, Selectman Ryan.
Move that the town vote to amend the town's general bylaws in accordance with Mass. General Law Chapter 41, Section 1, to change the office of Town Tree Warden from an elected position with a three-year term to an appointed position by the Board of Selectmen.
Is there a second? Finance committee?
Finance committee recommended unanimously.
Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen recommended unanimously.
Would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes. So, the board's looking to formally align the tree warden with the DPW, Department of Public Works. This came to light largely when Chris Iantelli retired. See, the town was lucky over the last decade or so to have great harmony between the tree warden and the DPW director because it was the same person. So, what we're looking to do here is really formalize what's been in place for the last several years. Currently, the tree warden has a very small budget, budget of $400. It has no staff, no equipment, and really, the DPW handles the function of the tree warden. So, it only makes sense to align the two positions together. This is, and that's, that's enough.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Peter Turner, 390 Forest Street. Mr. Moderator. A few years ago, this was on the warrant, and it was voted down. I don't know exactly how long ago, but it was. Few years before that, it was on the warrant, and it was voted down. I spoke out then, and I'm going to say the same thing as I said those two times. The only way to guarantee that the town, that the tree warden is a town resident is to make it an elected position. Promises that it will be a resident by others are just that, promises, and they go away as memories fade. So, I'll be voting against this, to keep it a town resident.
If it's such a small position, why didn't you just merge them both? I thought they merged them, they go when they did it with Chris Iantelli and the kid you laid off, and he's getting paid at home. That kid. They were never merged?
No. This is, this is our attempt to merge.
I, I'm just asking town people, listen to what Peter just said. They're doing this right now, getting somebody from the Highway Department out of town. They'll do the same thing. People in this town deserve to work in their own town. Bolt this down and just leave it the way it is. It's not broken, don't fix it.
Any further discussion?
Hello, my name is Maya Hay. I'm from 235 Cell Street. Sorry if I don't articulate myself well, but my first question is, how will you be choosing this position if you blend them together? What will be the questions that you're asking? That's my first question.
Sure, well, the question, the position will, will move into the, you know, become part of the DPW director's job, so that the DPW director will, by all effect, be the tree warden as well.
And my other thing is that, yes, it's not with the Public Works now, but the, it's an elected position, and so we currently just elected a new tree warden, which is now with the Conservation Office. And as someone with an ecology master's, having someone that really cares about what trees we're planting and where it's going, I think is really critical to think about, especially the way the climate's going. So, that's just something that I'd like to say.
Thank you.
Hallabunker, 123 North Elm Street. What is the, because I know Chris has always done both, because he had both. Is, what is the purpose of making this the position for the Board of Selectmen to appoint? Is it so that we can have the DPW director, appoint the DPW director as that? Because if people's concerns are having it as a West Bridgewater resident, can't we just change the bylaw to indicate that it needs to be a West Bridgewater resident?
Not here tonight, not that quickly.
Well, no, but I mean, it, you know, but isn't that something that we could do?
The, the bigger piece for me in this process is function. So, you have a tree warden that could recommend removing a tree with no ability to do so unless the DPW director wants to do it, and vice versa.
Right.
So, the ideal situation is to find somebody that can handle that, both as a DPW director with concern and respect for what needs to be done from an ecological perspective, as it ties to taking down trees or leaving, you know, leaving them up, whatever it is. But right now, you could have two people that, that just completely dislike one another and absolutely nothing, but nothing would get done in those two positions.
So, let's just say that we put this through, and it goes through this time, and you guys are going to appoint somebody. Are you looking at, though, to be able to appoint the DPW director to avoid that situation?
It would be the most appropriate person.
Okay. And is tree warden paid or unpaid?
Unpaid.
Unpaid?
He's right behind you, and he's unpaid. Or he was right behind you.
Well, yeah, he just scares me sometimes when he do that. Never know when he's going to pop up. Okay, that's fine. I don't see what the big deal is on?
So, historically in this town, the tree warden has been the forestry superintendent probably for the last 90 years or so. Myself, 30 years, and my two predecessors, probably 30 or 40 years. Because the forestry superintendent was the tree warden, it was an elected position, and I got elected every three years for the last 30 years. But six years ago, when we combined and we made a DPW, the DPW director would make sense to be the tree warden. In every city in town, by law, you have a tree warden, and it can be elected, or it can be appointed by the Board of Selectmen. And like they were just saying, that if an elected tree warden requested a tree to come down, he has no budget to do that, because it's now under the DPW, and it just makes sense to do it this way. Okay? I'm totally in favor of it, okay? And I was in favor years ago. It just made sense, okay?
Tim Hay, your current tree warden. This is kind of my position at the moment. However, my concern is that when they find the new DPW director, whoever, is that they're qualified. This is a state-mandated position. The State House has regulations for this. It's not just about taking down the trees. You also have a bunch of invasive insects, pests, diseases that have to be dealt with. You also have a Massachusetts pesticide license that is a requirement. As this town grows, there's going to be more requirements of this position, so if you're going to hire a DPW director, you better make sure he has those qualifications in-house when he gets them, or will be getting them after. I don't have a problem with this being under the DPW. I think it does make sense. However, I just want to make sure the qualifications are dealt with in the manner that they're supposed to.
So, I just want a couple of clarifications. People could vote however you want to vote, I just want to make sure you have all the facts. One, this was voted on in 2009. It passed at town meeting. It went to referendum, and it failed, because for whatever reason, at that time, they thought they had to do both. It was the wrong process. We've already run this by legal counsel. All it requires is a Board of Select, I mean, a town meeting vote, because it is set by your bylaw. It is not set by state law to have to go to referendum. So, this vote tonight is binding. The reason we are bringing it back before you is because after we did the legal research, we thought that it was wrong, that where there was a referendum in 2009 and it failed, that we're just going to rely on that town meeting vote. So, I just want to make sure there's clarification on those facts. The second item is, this does not stipulate that it'll be the DPW director, because Tim Hay is entirely correct. It must be a qualified person, and that gives the Board of Selectmen a lot of discretion to make sure it is the qualified person. Right now, we've been very fortunate, because Chris Iantelli was able to serve both roles and had the staff, the resources, and the expertise to do the job. There is nothing in this bylaw that says the Selectmen will not reappoint or maintain Tim Hay as Conservation Agent, except that he would then have to work in concert with DPW, and the nice thing is the Board of Selectmen oversee both, so that way, if there's a conflict, we can resolve it. If you have a separately-elected person, they don't answer to the Board, they don't answer to the DPW, and if you have conflict, you may not get anything done. The second thing is, it's just because you're elected, doesn't mean you have the license. All you have to do is be 18 and live in town. So, that's why it's very important for us to make sure that we have the right person, and by giving the Board of Selectmen that appointment authority, they have the ability to make sure that occurs.
Art Cabral, 77 Walnut Street. I think David might have just partially answered my question, because the article didn't say anything about making the DPW director the tree warden. Jeff, I kind of implied that as he was talking, but that's not a requirement. You could potentially appoint Tim as the tree warden under his current, you know, the same way as he's the current elected position, and you'd just still have to work it out to make sure the DPW does what he needs to do. Because the first thing I thought, I read this, is like, oh, we just created a new position, Town Tree Warden, which we're now going to hire a new person in next year? Because someone would bring, be bringing this up, all of a sudden, we're going to have another line item with another, it's not going to be an unpaid position like the elected was, and it's going to start growing into something new. So, but you're not, you're not tying it specifically to it being the director, and you're not changing anything in terms of budgeting how the department, how the tree warden job operates. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Eyes have it by majority. Article 35. There is Hugh Hurley.
Mr. Moderator. Move that the town vote to amend the town's general bylaws by adding a new section entitled "Mobile Food Vendors and Food Trucks," as printed in the warrant.
Is there a second? Finance committee?
The finance committee voted to refer this to the voters.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously.
Would you like to speak to this motion?
Yes, sir. What this does is, is food trucks are becoming popular now. You see them all over the place, but we don't, or didn't have any, any regulations on it. This has requirements that they get, make sure they have the licenses from the Board of Health, and in some cases, the Board of Selectmen. It also sets ours, it sets a bunch of things, kind of to keep them in, in line, so that we don't just have a bunch of gypsies running around selling food.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Just a quick question. I apologize for not having read through the whole article. Will this have any impact on the food trucks that are there at Park Day in September?
Make sure that they're, they're licensed, so forth.
Any further discussion?[1784.21]
Benjamin Goode, 21 Cross Street. I just want to ask, I mean, like I said, my neighbor does one of these food trucks, does a pizza one. Like I said, they go through all kinds of state regulations. There are different ones that the town of West Bridgewater would want to see. Is that what this is for, or is it just for like a tax and purposes, to tax the vehicle on their property when they're parking it there? I just want to ask whether you wanted to change out of the bylaws, what's now, what you're changing it to.
Well, I realize that there are state requirements, but this just puts town requirements. And it's like, one of the things that, without getting the permission of a restaurant, they can't, they can't set up in the, across the street from an existing restaurant.
I mean, don't they have to get permission permitting to put that where they want to go? I mean, left their own private property, someone's house, I guess that's a little bit different thing. But I just wanted to know what you were trying to change and what the reason was for. That was all.
This bylaw just puts it all on paper, what they have to do. And it's, it's, it all makes sense what they need to do.
Hey, right now, it's currently not allowed in town, except for certain special circumstances. So right now, if a food truck wants to go and pop up somewhere, and they go, they can't even go through and get the appropriate paperwork. Now, sometimes you'll see, and that's Lady Sunshine standing right there coming up next, she does have a food truck, and she has to go through a bunch of different requests just to get her, her coffee truck set up. And I'm pretty sure she's about to explain a little bit more, because I think you might have missed a couple of things.
Thank you, Hugh. So Elizabeth Estabrook, 145 Spring Street. I'm not Lady Sunshine, I'm just her driver. But I do drive the yellow Volkswagen around town. It's a mobile coffee truck. And I was, I started my business here in this town about a year and a half ago. And I was informed that I wasn't able to operate as a mobile food truck here. And the reason was, is because it wasn't in our bylaws to include food trucks, for a variety of reasons. So we worked together, and we were able to create some general bylaws that allowed food trucks to come in and operate with, you know, respect to the community. But this, to your question, this, we go through so many permits in every town.
Do you ever get local?
Yes, and there's, yes, and there's going to be, yeah.
Please bring all discussion to the microphone. Thank you.
Yes, so there, there's a variety of laws. But I do think that bringing this up to speed and voting in favor of this also brings us up to speed with local towns, too.
Any further discussion?
Mark Churchill, 2 Cornerstone Lane. I'm generally in favor of this. That's the impression that I got, is that it sounds like it's a good idea. It just puts into place good reasonable restrictions around, you know, putting it near somebody else's established restaurant. It, it makes sense. The one thing that struck me, and I reached out to Annie, and she passed it along to a couple of other folks, is it struck me when I read it, I said, what about ice cream trucks? You know, the typical ones that go, they get the sounds going long, and you go down the street, and they stop when they see a little kid that wants to buy an ice cream for $3. Not as common as they were 20, 30, 40 years ago, but still, they, they hear them around in the various neighborhoods here. I struck, and when I read through this, I said, I think they need to apply for like stopping at a particular place. They wouldn't be able to just drive down the street, see a bunch of kids, pull over to a reasonable spot, stop, and sell ice cream. And then, the answer that I got back, and Annie, I can't remember who it was that answered, who was it?
Tracy Alvin, the town committee.
Yes, Tracy, yeah. She'd indicate, I guess it's already not allowed?
No, it is allowed. And according to the current bylaws, frozen treats is the way it's written in the bylaw. It is currently allowed. And it states under frozen treats.
Oh, in, in, in the existing?
Yes.
Or in what is proposed?
In the existing. In the existing, when it comes to frozen treats, it is allowed.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it unanimously. I could go for a frozen treat right now. Article 36. Hugh Hurley.
Mr. Moderator. Move that the town vote to amend the town's general bylaws by amending Article 36, Mobile Home Park Regulations, as printed in the warrant.
Is there a second? Finance Committee?
Finance Committee voted unanimously to refer this to the voters.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously.
Would you like to speak to this motion?
Yes, sir. Currently, in the bylaw, there's a size on what is allowed as a storage shed, a yard shed. And these houses do not have basements in them, they don't have garages, so they don't have the storage. So what they're doing is they're asking to make them a larger size. And they're also governing the placing of it. There is, to be at the rear corner. And in cases where several lots come together, actually, they can put them right up against each other, so that they're not taking up as much space. So they're not going to be in the front of yards, they're all going to be in the back of yards. And it's just because people need a little storage place, whether it's for their line shares, or their barbecue, or whatever.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it unanimously. Article 37, and this is a 2/3s vote. Hugh Hurley.
Mr. Moderator. Move that the town vote to amend the town's zoning bylaws by amending Section 2, Definitions, and Section 4.4, Table of Use Regulations, as printed in the warrant.
Can you read the Planning Board's recommendation, too?
Yes. I was waiting for you. I'd asked for it. To the annual town meeting, the 2024 West Bridgewater Annual Town Meeting contains six proposed zoning amendments. And the Planning Board held a public hearing on Wednesday, May 1, 2024, pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 5, and the West Bridgewater Planning Board voted unanimously to vote, the members vote, to recommend Article 37. And the intent of Article 37 is to amend Section 2, Definitions, to add a definition of a contractor's storage yard, and to amend Sections 4.4, Table of Use, to prohibit contractors' storage yards in the general residence and farming district. The proposed motion, okay, it just needs, that's basically.
Thank you. Is there a second? Finance Committee?
Unanimously to refer this to the voters.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously.
Thank you. Would you like to speak further to the motion?
Yes, if I, if I could. Somehow or rather, when we recodified the bylaws back, back in the 90s, the last century, one of the things that we had was that a contractor's storage yard could be in the general residence and farming district. And I'm not sure how it happened. It was just an oversight. And we really didn't have too much of a problem with it, until recently, when it's a section of land that you can only get to in Brockton that is adjacent to our well field, where somebody wanted to put in a contractor's storage yard. And what it was amounted to is he was bringing in food waste, lawn waste, leaves, everything in, and composting it. So it was, it became a concern. So, and, and the only way you can do it is to change the law. Actually, that particular thing, case is in court right now. So the courts are doing it. But in the course of doing it, we'd redefined what the contractor's yard would be, and we struck it out. So it is not an allowed use in a general residence and farming district. It's only allowed in a business or an industrial area, and it's only allowed with a special permit from the zoning board.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it by majority. Sorry, 2/3s majority. Article 38. This is another 2/3s vote. Hugh Hurley?
Mr. Moderator. Move that the town vote to amend the town's zoning bylaws, Section 4.4, Table of Use Regulations, and Section 6.5.2, Business and Industrial District Signs, as printed in the warrant.
Thank you. Is there a second? Finance Committee?
Unanimously to refer to voters.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously.
Would you like to speak further to the motion?
This goes to the lighted signs, the, the digital signs that we're seeing more and more of now. And as Annie was talking earlier about the, the sign getting rusted and blowing over, and not being able to, to get the word out. And as we know, our local newspaper doesn't carry much for news in it. And usually, if it is, it's yesterday's the last week's news by the time they get it out there. So this is a way of being able to address very quickly to tell, tell the people what's going on. As you drive by, you see it.
Thank you. Can you read the Planning Board's recommendation, too, for that?
Yes, sir. To the annual town meeting, the 2024 West Bridgewater Annual Town Meeting contains, okay, six. The Planning Board held a public hearing on Wednesday, May 1, 2024, pursuant to Mass. General Laws, 48, Section 5, and the West Bridgewater Planning Board voted unanimously by the vote of the members present to adopt Article 38. The article, the intent of the article was to amend the, yeah, I'll squash down. The intent of, there, okay, I can now see it. The intent of Article 38 is to amend the town's zoning bylaws, Section 6.5.2, Business and Industrial District Signs, to add the town senate district to the sign regulations contained herein. The proposed motion reads as follows, and I, which I just did.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it unanimously. By 2/3s, even if it's unanimous. Article 39. This is another 2/3s vote. Hugh Hurley?
Mr. Moderator. Move that the town, amend the town's zoning bylaws, Section 2, Definitions, and Sections 4.4, Table of Use Regulations, as printed in the warrant.
Thank you. Is there a second? Finance Committee?
Finance Committee voted to refer this to the voters.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously.
Would you like to speak to the motion? And is there a Planning Board recommendation?
Mr. Moderator. The Planning Board held a public hearing on Wednesday, May 1, 2024, pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 5, and the West Bridgewater Planning Board members voted by a vote of 3, 4, as 1 against recommending the adoption of this article.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it unanimously. Article 40. Another 2/3s vote, and that is, leave Hugh Hurley. Yes, it is.
Shuffling my papers around a little bit. Okay, Article 40. Mr. Moderator. Move that the town vote to amend the town's zoning bylaws regulating accessory dwelling units, as printed in the warrant.
Thank you. Is there a second? Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted unanimously to refer this to the voters.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommended unanimously.
Would you like to speak to the motion? And is there a Planning Board recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, yes. The Planning Board on, held a public hearing on Wednesday, May 1, 2024, pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 5, and the West Bridgewater Planning Board voted by a unanimous vote of the members present for this adoption. This regulation is, we've been, used to call them in-law apartments. And what it is, is it comes up with a way of allowing this to be done, but also regulating it as far as the outside appearance, so it isn't, it doesn't appear to be two houses. It's, it's supposed to be self-contained. It has to be a connection, a door between the two units, so that you don't have to walk outside to get to the other, other side. There's also an affidavit in there that has to be filled out by the owner, and has to be renewed annually stating this. There's also provisions in it that will not allow rental, and I know, like, it mentions fraternities in there, so that we don't, we don't have one of these things like, like Bridgewater has, where people were renting out their garages to college kids, and they're having parties and stuff. So it just kind of explains all those things.
Thank you. Any discussion?
So Hugh kind of answered most of my questions, because I wanted to know what really an accessory dwelling unit consisted of. Reading here, it says it's part of a dwelling, a single family, provides provisions for living, sleeping, eating, cooking, sanitation, and shall not be designed, built, or used as a separate, independent dwelling. So if it's an in-law apartment, I don't understand why that, if I'm bringing my mother-in-law in and putting her there, and it's, she considers her a separate, what, what makes it not separate? She has the same address as us? Or, you know, how does that work? And then you said there's now a requirement that they have to re-attest to something every year? I don't under, I don't understand all how that works and where that's written into these words.
The idea is, is not to be turning it into a duplex. If, if you, if you don't have something like this, you can, all of a sudden, this turns around when, when the, either the in-law, or it might even be sometimes in the case of children, or some kind, is in there, for somebody needs a provider. Maybe somebody needs a caretaker to take, to take care of them. When, when the need is, stops, and that's why the affidavit, when the need is stopped, the use stops. Now, the person who owns the house, they've, they've just got a, they've got two kitchens, and an extra bathroom, and an extra bedroom, too. But it, it, the intent is not to create a bunch of duplexes.
John Cruz, 123 North Elm. I just want to thank you and the rest of the zoning bylaw committees for putting in the long hours and homework that's required to come up with this stuff. This isn't easy. I know a lot from firsthand what's involved. I have one question, though. Can it be amended to include existing adjacent structures already on the property, which will open up the area for increased housing? Because I know we're under the threat of this MBTA Communities Act, increase, which we will have to increase our housing in the, in the community. This way, it'll increase housing on existing structure in the community, not building a new one, and limit it to whatever the qualifications that we have currently. Not as, not so much as a rental, but maybe as an in-law, or whatever the proper definition of that can be. But this would amend it to include an existing adjacent structure on the property, just to, just to lessen our, so we can get, maybe someday, we can get, get that 40B threat off our, off our shoulders here by decreasing the amount of homes that we need, or, or housing units that we need. Thank you, Hugh.
Well, to begin with, the Subdivision Control Act, which is a state-enabling legislation, actually does not allow you to have two houses on one lot. So what you're saying there pretty much is, is that, but this will allow you to have, you could have a freestanding building to satisfy this, which you might or could be connected. But when the need is gone, you can't use it, or you can't rent it out.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Art Cabral, 77 Walnut Street. Just something that jumped out, and maybe it's nothing, but if not, it needs to be fixed. On the table, it says accessory dwelling unit in accordance with 6.7 accessory dwelling units. Item 3-
with 6.7 accessory dwelling units. Item 3 is add a new Section 6.2.4 accessory. Is that reference wrong in the table? Because if it is, we should change that before it gets voted in and somebody plays games down the road. Yeah, but in your table, 6.7 accessory dwelling units. There is no 6.7. 6.7 applications. Yeah, it's all, it's all 624 in what we're changing, but then it references 6.7. But this almost looks like it should be 6.2.4.11. Yeah, but it goes 62410, and then it goes to 67. That's why, if it's a typo or something, we want to catch it before we've voted in. There are 67 in that current bylaws. Yeah, we come down all these, and jumps to 2467.
Can Tracy Aldrich speak to this?
Tracy Aldrich, Town Planner. I just took a look. I believe that is an error from an earlier draft that we were working on. So you're correct.
Okay, how do we change that so if we vote it in, it is in right?
It would be to reference, I think it's 6 point...
No, but I mean, how do we do that here?
Oh, I would ask Town Council how we procedurally address that.
So I think the motion could be to move that the town vote to amend the Town zoning bylaws regarding accessory dwelling units as printed in the warrant, with the exception of, in the table that's printed on the warrant, the reference to Section 6.7 should be Section
And then, and then that 6711 reference at the bottom, change that to 6.2.11 or 2.4, whatever.
And in the final paragraph of the article, that the section, the reference to Section Just excuse me while I get that, make sure we get this reference correct.
So it looks like it'd be 62411.
I believe it should be...
Go back one page.
Just bear with me for a moment. We got to make sure we get this right.
Robin Dragonetti, 30 Commonwealth Ave. While we're at it, the bottom of page 27, 6.2.4.3 is used twice. So that would need to be fixed, too.
So if that's 62410, the next one should be 62411.
So that, so that last paragraph should be 6.2.4.11. And then I think the motion could be to further authorize the clerk to make any corrections that are necessary in order to ensure that the sections all align properly with the bylaw.
Is it a family amendment? Do they have to read it again? Do we have to take a vote?
I think it could be a family amendment. I think we could, yeah, I think if there's no objection, then it could be a friendly amendment.
So who wants to resume that?
Can you explain that to them, just so I don't think I'm making this up?
Yeah, if there's no objection to the meeting, the maker of the motion, if there's no objection, the maker could amend the motion, and then it would be as I just suggested.
Is there any objection? Hearing none? Okay, so that's a friendly amendment made. So now, is there any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. Jack Hughes, 640 North Elm. I just wanted to compliment the Planning Board. I have two friends, one who lives in Brockton, who had his parents move into a new in-law and they had to get it permitted. And Brockton has some crazy rules. They were not allowed to put a bathroom into the new unit that his parents were moving into. And West Bridgewater, similar family friend of mine, did the same thing with his parents. And they just went to Planning Board public meetings about a month and a half ago, and it went through and went fine. And it basically complies with this, so I thank the town for doing that.
Perfect. Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. And again, this is a two-thirds vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it by two-thirds majority.
Mr. Moderator, move that the town move, excuse me, move that the town vote to amend the Town's zoning bylaws regulating the water resource protection overlay amendments.
Thank you. Is there a second? Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted to refer to voters.
Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen recommended unanimously.
Would you like to speak to the motion? And is there a Planning Board recommendation?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. The Planning Board held a public hearing on May 1st, 2024 pursuant to Mass General Laws 48 and Section 5, and the West Bridgewater Planning Board voted by unanimous vote to recommend adoption of this Article 41.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Benjamin Goode, 21 Cross Street. Just question, is this to move like the water protect, like, what do you call it there? What the hell is the word they, like I said, you can't build on it, like I said, because of the water. Like I said, you got to move to a different spectrum of the town. I mean, is this to open up more property to build on, or is this just to try to match the code with other codes? Because like I said, I know you're able to move your wetlands to a smaller drainage section now. Is this just to build more development places in town?
Mr. Moderator, maybe, I'd like to speak to the motion. I gave you the report, but I never had a chance to speak to the motion. What this is, is we have a Water Resource Protection District, and it basically does what it says. This is for the well water. This isn't for the wetlands. This isn't for the rivers. This is for our drinking water. We have an overlay zone, different areas in the vicinity of it. We have actually three separate districts. One is the Seale Street area, one is the Manly Street area, and the other one is the North Elm Street area. We have a piece of property off of North Elm Street for a potential well in the future. We have not drilled it or utilized it yet, but that's, that's something in the future to have. And it is covered by a district, an overlay district. And normally, things like that, zoning things are handled by the Zoning Board of Appeals. But in this particular case, it was decided a long time ago to have the Planning Board do it. And our former two, two town councils ago, recommended that when it was done, that the Planning Board be the special permit granting authority, whereas normally it is the zoning board. And it worked very good for a long time until we had a development that had an attorney that he wanted to show how smart he was. And he came up with something different, and he ran it by our Town Council, and Town Council had to agree with him. So this was put together to clarify the issue. And so now, once this is adopted, something being done in this overlay district will come under the authority or the granting authority will be the Planning Board. And also, it spells out, the Planning Board will also be doing the special permit for uses that are allowed in the particular zone, like if it's a business zone or the industrial zone. We will also be overseeing that. So it's, it's just a clarification, because it was, which we were going to be having was two separate public hearings going on, two separate special permits being written out. And it just was not a good way of doing. So this is a clarification. It's kind of going back to what our former Town Council proposed back in, when it came in and the...
So it's going to help us conserve the land that we have for the drainage and everything for our drinking water? We'll be able to, as the Planning Board, you'll be able to start construction of these, some of these new developments that are popping up everywhere to kind of numb this down, whether this is some of our drains. It's just not a loophole where...
Well, what this does is spells out what you can do in this overlay district. The overlay district is not a, something that doesn't allow you to do anything, because it's a lot of, lot of, lot of things you can do. A lot of things can be done safely with...
So I mean, this will just help us with more ammunition? Like I said, when you get a tricky lawyer comes in saying, like, I want to build over here, it gives you a little bit more ammo, be like, no, we're not doing that. I just, I want to understand why we're changing it.
Yeah, I don't want to render an opinion on attorneys.
I got you. Like I said, I was just looking for more information.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
If I heard you right, Hugh, basically, all we're changing here is zoning board of appeals doesn't regulate this anymore. The overlay district will now fall under the purview of Planning Board. Nothing else has really changed. The overlay district stays the same. The regulation stays the same as it's been in the past, the last eight or 10 years. The only thing it's doing, we're moving so we don't have to have two reviews before two different boards. It makes it easier to get it through with one review, because the controlling board is Planning Board.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it unanimously. Article 42, Hugh Hurley. Oh, no, that's Jeff Ryan.
Going to move that the town take a vote to amend the Town's, end of the night. Try this again. Going to move that the town take a vote to amend the Town's zoning bylaws, Section 5.2.1, single-family and two-family dwelling minimum lot sizes as printed on the warrant.
Okay. Thank you. Planning Board?
Mr. Moderator, the Planning Board on May 1st...
Oh, is there a second?
Oh.
Thank you. Go ahead.
The, Mr. Moderator, the Planning Board held a public hearing on May 1st, 2024 pursuant to Mass General Laws 48, Section 5, and the West Bridgewater Planning Board voted by unanimous vote of the members present not to recommend the adoption of Article 32.
Thank you. Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted to refer this to the voters.
Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted unanimously, recommended unanimously.
Thank you. Would anyone like to speak to the motion?
Yes. So I'd like to address the motion first. The basic premise of this motion is to take our single-family dwelling lot size from three-quarters of an acre up to an acre and proportionally raise the two-family, or the duplex size from 600,000 square feet to, I'm sorry, 60,000 square feet to 75,000 square feet. Board is doing this based on a variety of factors. Many have been discussed here tonight. As the town is experiencing a large growth spurt, and with the state potentially pushing some additional housing down upon us, there are some things we can control and there's some things we can't control. Right now, meetings with the School Committee, they've discussed how the elementary schools right now are full. All of you are aware that we are looking, you know, to expand or replace our elementary schools as they have reached a crowded level. As part of that crowded level, every time, we are now, the School Committee, correction, is now also reducing the number of students that are there in school choice to make room for the additional students based on the additional houses that are being developed and built in town. We talked about the Water Department tonight and how they're headed in a great direction, but we've just invested close to $15 million in the Water Department and two plants in the last two years, right, based on our meeting tonight and our meeting last year. And there's still some catching up to go on there. We don't need to talk about 106 and how crowded it is. And I mentioned already, but the state pushing MBTA housing this way, well, that's something we can't necessar, well, maybe we can stop, maybe we can't. Discussion for another day. But we need to control what we can control. And by increasing the minimum lot size, we can reduce some housing. Easiest example, right, at three-quarters of an acre, I'm sorry, three-quarters of an acre for a single-family dwelling on a 20-acre piece of property, excuse the fact that there's no driveway or anything along those lines, but basic math, you can put 25 houses on those lots, assuming they're all buildable. With this being readjusted, now we're putting 20 houses on the lots. So we can do very, this is something we can do to slow some growth down in town and try to get control of both of our schools back and our water back, as I think we're approaching, you know, potential crisis mode down the road. And this is something we should do now.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Mr. Moderator, the Planning Board is not in favor of this. Yes, you can, it sounds like it'll work, but what it is more apt to do is encourage people to do other, other things. If you make it harder, they're going to go the 40B route. And if somebody has a piece of land and to divide it up, if you, the more you make it, more palatable for them, the more they're going to do it. We've got, in Cochise, right next to the Honeydew, we have 24 units on a 31,000-square-foot lot. Those are the, that's the kind of thing that come in and out. Zoning was never intended to regulate the number of students in schools. The single-family houses compared to what the MBTA zoning that Mr. Ryan talked about is for 145 units, that's a, we've never had a subdivision anywhere near that, that size in there. This is a town, we have these sized lots, and it's a, it's a doable thing. Making, to make it even bigger is going to mean, is going to be more expensive for somebody to buy a house. And as you know, the way the prices of the houses are going, I don't know how anybody can buy a house anymore, but that's, this is only going to further that to it. It's almost, it's a, well, actually, it is. Back in the 60s, they referred to it as snob zoning. Several towns tried doing it, and various places, it was struck down. The 40B is actually referred to as this snob zoning thing. Doing something like this is snob zoning. We're making lots bigger. You look around, how many people still mow their own lawn? I know I do, but you see lawn care contractors all over the place. It's, you can drive down a street and you can see two or three of them in there. So now you're going to have your lots being that much bigger. It's going to be that much more expensive if they choose to do that. Now, I know a lot of people, they, they work and they don't have time to do it, or they may not be physically able to do it. So this is going to be a further expense on them. The law is physics says for reaction, there's an equal and opposite reaction. I'm afraid, I'm concerned with the opposite reaction that this can have. We have a couple of sites that people are just waiting, and they probably will be coming in with a 40B if we made it more desirable, maybe, that come in with a conventional. Not everybody wants to live in an apartment or a townhouse or whatever, or live in a very small lot. A lot of people would like to have a house, and why make it much harder for them? And this is going to come around and do it. And I doubt that it's going to change too much, because a lot of times in the land, it's the configuration that would say, you have a piece of property that's 600 feet wide. And a road is 50 feet. And for a 30,000-square-foot lot, that's 200 feet of depth, so that's 450. So you've got another 75 feet on either side. They can throw that in into it. You're not stopping anything. It sounds like you are, but it's more to the geometry of dividing lots up than just the area. It's the road placement. It's the wetland placement. There's, and the configuration. So I strongly hope that you turn this down, because I don't think it's going to accomplish what they want. I don't, and I'm not going to even try to give an answer how they can hold down the new number of students coming into our schools and the cost of it. And I know the costs are way out of sight, but this is not the vehicle to do it with. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. Could you ask someone on the Planning Board, please, to comment on how this will impact current homeowners that now will have pre-existing non-conforming lots? Will that restrict what they're going to be able to do with their property now that it's non-conforming?
Would anyone from the Planning Board like to speak to that?
Maybe we should ask town council to. Well, no, I'll answer to, but I think you're probably a better authority than I am.
All right. So it was correctly pointed out that the term is pre-existing non-conforming. So lots that pre-exist this change, they continue to, the structures that are on them and the lots continue to be legal because they were, the lots were laid out and the structures were built prior to this change. And then for things like additions after the change, there's rules that apply to the alteration of pre-existing non-conforming structures. So if a lot, if a building does have that status, a house is on a lot that was made non-conforming by this change, then, it depends on the extent of the alteration, but it might, in some situations, it could be done potentially by right. But in many situations, it would require a finding by the zoning board that the building, the residence is not, as with the addition, is not more detrimental than the pre-existing non-conforming building. So there would be an approval process to expand buildings if they're pre-existing non-conforming. Hugh, maybe, Hugh Hurley may be able to speak to the specifics of how that works in West Bridgewater. I'm not prepared to get into all of the, sort of, the minutia about it, but those residences would continue to be legal, and then there might be an approval process just to make sure that the, an expansion doesn't, basically, isn't detrimental to the neighborhood.
Jan Fox, 311 East Street. I agree with what the Planning Board said that I don't, while it's an admirable goal, I don't think this will help you accomplish the, reducing the growth in town. I just, I just don't think it's really the right approach. I just wanted to say that.
Thank you. Is there any new information to be brought forward?
Yeah. Jack Hughes, 640 North Elm. About five years ago, maybe seven years ago, two houses for me burned down. And they're not meeting the 30,000 square feet and 150-foot frontage. Would this, if my house burned down, am I going to be able to rebuild my house without going to a special zoning board of appeals hearing? Because I think he had to go through that.
So that would depend, because lots that pre-exist the change, the lot itself is considered grandfathered. That's the old term they used to use, pre-existing non-conforming. That might depend on some of the specifics of that situation. Sometimes, because it depends on those lots, if a building was already non-conforming, the lot was non-conforming. And sometimes it depends on the timeframe that goes by. There's other factors that could come into play.
Thank you. Any new information? Yes.
I would just like to address maybe one part of 40B. And I think 40B is going to be an issue in this town with this or without this. I don't think this proposal necessarily changes anything as far as 40B goes. Town of Wrentham has a two-acre minimum and has less 40B lots than we do. Now, I'm not saying we're the town of Wrentham. I'm not trying to compare, but the point is, 40B is going to be an issue until we find a location and a place to apply and reach that 145, 150-unit development or, you know, separate, but multiple developments. There is nothing, I don't see, I see 40B, not acreage not being the reason or the reason why developers are choosing to go 40B. I see them doing that as a way to skirt all the local zoning, not just what this would be. Doing nothing is not going to change anything that we have right now. Doing this, at least, can reduce some larger developments and the sizes of houses that could be built on those developments. Thank you.
Sir, any new information?
Yes, when Mr. Ryan brought up about the larger lots. Larger lots usually have to be justified. Usually, they're for soil or for water concerns. That is, to have enough room to have a septic system on the property and also a well, which has to be at least 100 feet away from an adjacent one. That's a justification for having a larger lot. It's no justification for having a lot larger than 30,000 square feet. It's worked for, since 1954 in this town. It was brought up the fact that there'll be existing non-conforming houses. You know, if it, the cliche, "If it ain't broke, don't fix it." Well, I'm saying this is not broke. And if we try to fix it, the ramifications may be worse. You know, like the medicine is worse than the sickness sometimes.
This is a 2/3 vote. I'm going to call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Yeah, it's too close to call. I'm sorry. We're going to have to do a vote. Talking to the microphone?
I'd like to call up the talliers.
Any? On the talliers, they were handing out little pieces of paper outside. Flyers to people. Look at the card, make sure it's a card, not a flyer.
Please hold up your cards now and keep them held until I say, "Don't." This is for yea. Afterwards, nay, no, will hold up their hands. Thank you. Please put your hands down. And now, we're going to do the no votes. Anyone who is against this motion, please raise your hands and keep them held until I say... Yeah. Okay, you can put them down now. The results are in. Yes votes, 61. No votes, 35. Motion does not pass. It needs a 2/3 vote, that's why. All right. Article 33, James Neuss. I understand we're tabling this motion. Is that correct? Okay. So that concludes the annual town meeting. The time is 8:21. The meeting is now dissolved. Perfect. 8:21.